Good evening, everybody. I now call to order this May 1st Friendswood City Council regular meeting and announce that we have a forum. If you weren't here earlier, we celebrated May as Jewish American Heritage Month, so we had a little get-together. There's still some remnants of the reception out there. Y'all want to grab something on your way out? And because of that, our invocation tonight will be led by Rabbi Peter Kessler from Congregation Benay Israel in Galveston, unless he left. Oh, there you are.
I didn't know the background.
All right. Please stand and then remain standing after the invocation. We'll say the prayers.
Hallelujah, v'lohea votenu, v'imotenu, O righteous and infinite God. Grant your blessings to these fine men and women who are leading the people of Friendswood, Texas. Help them to be good listeners, great judges, and kind arbiters as they hear what goes on in the life of this wonderful community. Thank you, God, for allowing this fine place to be representative of one of the few places in our country to recognize this month, this Jewish Heritage Month. We are grateful for their guidance, their counsel, and their understanding. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Item four is council comments and reports. We brought.
Yeah, the library is having a ceramics and craft show this Saturday from noon until four o'clock. Anyone is welcome and come to it and pay part of it.
I'm so glad we did this recognition tonight before the meeting for the National Jewish Heritage Month. And we have a special guest tonight. I mean, Keith Prince is beautiful, but I'll wait and let Rod introduce her later. Thank you.
Councilmember Scott, who is here for his last regular council meeting of his career, 12 years.
Yeah.
I've got some Kleenex.
Is that for all the times I've made you laugh?
Yeah.
No, I don't know what the, what the meeting on the 17th will be like, but I feel like it should be a, should be a celebration of the new council, not so much rehashing, you know, when I did or didn't do right for 12 years. So I'll keep it, keep it brief. I just, it's been one of the greatest honors of my life to be able to serve this community in this capacity. When I ran 12 years ago, my son was in fifth grade, my daughter was in second grade, my son will graduate with a master's from A&amp;M in December, and my daughter is a junior at OU. So it's been a long run, when you think about it in those terms. But I feel that, you know, God has blessed this community so much through the years and what its, what its heritage is and the people that make up the community. And He blessed me, giving me the opportunity to sit in this seat and to argue and fight for those things that I think are important and those things that I think that make this community what it is. And that's a veteran community where everybody knows everybody, everybody looks out for everybody. That's why we're one of the safest cities in the country. That's why we have one of the best school districts in the country. And it's because of the people that live here. None of us up here are any better than anybody else. I wanted to make sure that over 12 years that everybody understood that. And I don't feel anything but honor to have the privilege to do this. And so for all of staff, the councilmen and women that I've served with over the years, the citizens that have showed up and paid attention to the meeting, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to spend the last 12 years doing what I thought was right for our community. So thank you all.
So it's hard, it's gonna be hard to, hard to follow that, but I just want to take a moment to express my thanks for the decision to have our city participate in the Jewish Heritage Month. Thanks to the staff and mayor for doing this. This is a, it's a pretty big deal. I don't know any other cities that did this, and when y'all asked me about this, it's pretty, pretty touching.
As a descendant of Holocaust survivors, this opportunity does mean a great deal to me. It's through events like this we can honor the rich history of the various cultures of the world and of the Jewish community this month while remembering the painful and tragic events of the past. Growing up, my family's Holocaust survival story played a significant role in shaping our identity and our worldview. Being able to share and celebrate my heritage with others in our city is incredibly meaningful to me. I'm grateful to live in a city that recognizes each and every one of us and the importance of celebrating diversity and creating a sense of community. It's what Friendswood's all about, and I just want to say thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Well, on that note, I, a lot of information comes across the mayor's desk, and I happened to notice that coming up was May and Jewish American Heritage Month, and all I did was mention it to Councilmember Aaron Werke, Councilmember Rocky, whose wife Susan is Jewish also, and they just threw this thing together and made it awesome. I mean, I didn't expect a big reception, a celebration. I did expect to read a proclamation, which is, you know, something I feel like I do every day, and I did twice on Saturday. Anyway, that was easy part for me, and you guys did all the hard work.
Susan did all the.
Susan put this thing together, so fantastic. Thank you so much for that. All right, we'll move on to item five, public comment. In order to comply with provisions in the Texas Open Meetings Act, city council may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda. As such, city council will listen to public comment and may, one, refer the item to city management for further action, or, two, direct staff replacement of said item on a future agenda. During public comment, public shall comply with rules of decorum. Rules allow each person three minutes to present information, time clock will flash a yellow light, and there are 30 seconds remaining. I may allow the time to flash a red light, repeating sound, until the time is expired. If you have any questions, please direct them to me. I have two cards. Jeff Wilson. Jeff Wilson? Yes, sir. Did you want to speak? Come on up.
I've never done this before, so.
Well, good luck.
Bear with me.
Yes, sir.
But what I want to talk about was the land, we're talking about purchasing on 23 Wilderness Trails, which I assume is gonna be for a connection of the parkway. I don't know. I was here at the last council meeting, and I live on, I live on Castle Wood, been there over 20 years, and talking about making that a through street, and I'm just, I can't believe that's even an option, but I was told that it can happen. So I guess that's up in the air again now to connect to this new property that's gonna form this, this new parkway. And that's just my feelings on it. And it's really expensive, and me as a taxpayer, I know I'm gonna be helping foot the bill.
Thank you, sir.
My opinion on it.
Appreciate it, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm here to talk tonight about trees and trees that are legacies here in Friendswood. And recently, we had an event which introduced a group here in Friendswood called Tree Legacy that looks at the preservation, restoration, and reclamation, excuse me, of significant trees here in Friendswood and to take the trees that we have and take care of them. We are an organization, we are a nonprofit, and my purpose here is to make you aware that we hope to work with other organizations and entities and the community on both public and private land to bring awareness to the historical and visual value that these trees bring to our community. Once again, our organization operates under three main fields: to preserve, to restore, and to reclaim. Preserving means to bring awareness. Restoration means to contribute to the restoration. And reclamation means deleting in the efforts to repurpose dead or removed trees. And that's my primary thing to talk about tonight. We have reclaimed the trees that were on the parsonage lot that sat at, up here on 518. And one of the large trees has been sculpted into a beautiful history of Friendswood by the artist Earl Jones. It is going to be, with all of the permits and approvals that we need through the city, which we're working on now, it's going to be placed behind the Friends Church and in front of the Perry Home and will be a permanent part of the history of Friendswood. It will be called the Founder's Tree. It's three-sided, it speaks to the faith, the family, the education that is so important here in Friendswood. And so my purpose this, this evening, council members, is to make you aware, and you're gonna be hearing more about it, we hope you'll become involved. We have other trees that we hope to sculpt into other things. We have one that was also off the parsonage lot that we hope will become running Mustangs somewhere on the school property at the old, old junior high. And we also were able to keep the trunks of the Albritton property trees, those big old oaks. So we have lots of things planned in the future. Our purpose here today is to just make you aware, and we hope you all will be a part of it. It's gonna be exciting. And if you need to see pictures, I have them on my phone. Thank you. And you're welcome to share them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Hellenberg. Item six, A, receive the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee's annual report.
Mayor, the annual Animal Control Advisory Committee Shelter Report is in your backup material. I do not believe the chair of the board is here this evening to present anything.
All right. Thank you. Item seven, work session topic, discuss banners across South Friendswood Drive. And before we start, I'll remind council that during work session topic, our rules are relaxed. You know, we can have a discussion like we do in work sessions, so.
It's your bad rammers.
You didn't follow the rules.
He's messing more than anybody.
Okay. Yes. All right. So who's gonna present to us?
I will present this item. So at last month's meeting, Councilmember Rocky had asked me to put an item for work session discussion this evening. We've had a few instances this past year where we've had a number of requests for banners to be strung across FM 518. At times problematic because the banners conflicted with time constraints provided by other agencies and entities within the city asking for the same, same permit and the same allowance. This last month, we had a situation where the banner tore off and flew into the inlet, Storm Sewer Inlet on FM 518. The age of the banner was old, and we had, and thankfully, we were able to salvage it before a rainstorm had caused any potential damage. So we have a series of slides, I believe, in the backup material to go through.
Not 72?
Not 72. I think there's only seven or eight slides at tops. I'm saving the 72 for your last meeting, so here in two weeks. No, as you know, FM 518 is a state roadway. The Texas Department of Transportation oversees anything that's done within its right-of-way. And in order to put banners up there, we have to coordinate with them to make sure that, one, it's permissible, and, two, that they have visibility on it being their roadway. From that point forward, anyone interested in having a banner has to apply for a permit from the city of Friendswood in order for us to, one, verify that we have adequate space. There are two slots for which we can put up a banner, top and bottom, that still provides the clearance required for any vehicles, taller vehicles that are traveling the roadway. And then, two, to see if we have the availability of staff to go put it up there for the time period that's being requested. And then ultimately, once we have a permit in place, our folks have to go hang the banner. And it's not as simple as you would imagine. It's not a quick and easy process. We have to have a bucket truck out there. We have to obviously have traffic control to make sure there's no impact to the roadway while the bucket truck is up. We also have to have two people on the ground to help guide the installation of it, as well as the individual that's in the bucket truck. So there's quite a bit of human resources that go into installing these banners. And again, I did not mention this earlier, but the permit fee's only 25 bucks. So we spend, expend way more resources in putting the banners up. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna present y'all with three options. You're not gonna take an official vote this evening, but give us some direction of how you want to move forward. We can cease hanging the banners altogether, which if I had a vote in this, that would be my recommendation. Not necessarily because, and I understand there's gonna be diverging opinions on this. The only reason I would recommend doing away with it is I don't know a lot of folks that still utilize the banner. There are some, obviously, that are, that used to it, and it's near and dear their hearts in Friendswood, but if council were open to moving away from it, we can look at expanding the Stevenson Board Reader Board sign with the LED reader board that we currently have or the one at the library to, to convey the information that you would typically see on the banner. Option two, if you want to keep the banner, let's amend the ordinance at least to up our cost. One, to ensure that we have, we're covering our resources that are expended, and it's not a waste of those taxpayer-funded items. And then option three, a hybrid of the two approaches. We can look at expanding the electronic reader board and still leaving the banners in place. And with that, I'll turn it over to you guys. If you want to discuss it, there are pros and cons with each option, but do you want to go through those pros and cons individually, or you want to start sharing your thoughts?
I'll open it up to Steve. Steve put this on the agenda.
Yeah, I, you know, I happened to see when the banner was up that Mo was talking about got knocked down. And, and occasionally, you'll see all the effort that goes in, and it's, it's not just putting the banner up, it gets repeated to take it all down.
Yeah.
And I honestly think in this day of age, and social media and all the other things, that I don't think those things really help anybody get their word out anymore. And it is a little actually distracting because you have people looking up instead of, you know, following the roadway and all that. And I just think that it's probably coming, you know, it's probably run its course in terms of being something effective. You can, you can do something on most of the social media and get far more people's attention for, you know, pennies type of thing. So if it was up to me, I'd cease hanging the banners, to be honest.
Personally, I'm one of the proponents of the banners, you know, and maybe I'm crazy, but those banners, to me, take me back to my youth. I grew up in Wadsworth, Ohio, and Wadsworth, Ohio put banners up like that, you know, especially 4th of July and celebrations, you know, and Wadsworth, Ohio is still a small city, Friendswood is still a small city. It just reminds me of that small town. It's, yeah, we don't need it. I mean, if you needed that sign to remind you that it's, you can vote today, well, you probably aren't paying attention to anything else but the sign. So there's plenty of information sources out there, but I, I just like, and Mo and I are at odds on this because he wants to get rid of them, I like to keep them there. And, and if we were gonna do anything, I would say, let's, let's look at how we expand the reader board in Stevenson Park, because right now, it's, it's kind of a dinky reader board, and we would need to, I think, invest some money to get something that we could actually put real information on to, to give these organizations that, that ask us to hang a banner, get their information out there. Now, $25 is too cheap, frankly. I, I think we ought to be charging what it costs us for the time and effort that our guys are putting in to go out there and put it up and take it down. So we probably need to revise the fee for that, but I'll leave it at that. That's, that's my two cents. I can easily be overcome, but.
I'd like to piggyback onto what the mayor said. I do like the banners, but I also feel like that we should at least cover the cost. I mean, today, I was watching, kind of, you were just talking about, they were putting up a new banner, and it is, I mean, it's, it's worrisome to see them up there in that bucket over the traffic and what have you, but here's just a thought, that if you allow them to hang the banners still, we charge them what it costs us to put it up, but at the same time, offer or expand our use of the reader board. I'm thinking the cost there is probably pretty minimal.
No charge.
Yeah, and then see how these organizations, how they want to proceed. So let's not say no, but let's defer the cost to the folks who are actually asking for the service versus the city covering that. I guess that's where I'm coming from. So I think, and if we do expand the use of the reader board, I think it was Trish that brought this up. The message does go pretty fast. Maybe we could slow it down a little bit so as you're driving by, you actually have a chance to read the message that's on there, but I'd like to continue to offer both options, but cover our costs on hanging the banner.
It could be the stupidest thing I've heard since I've been up here 12 years. No, I think that, I think, I think the banners add value. I don't want to say if we're away with them, but we should increase the cost.
Trish.
Okay, I agree totally. I think they're easier to see, and if people are still asking for them, they all have social media accounts, too, but if they're still asking for them, they see value in it. And I can read those a lot easier personally than I can read that digital scrolling sign on the side of the road.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's just very Americana, and I like it. This came up at P&amp;Z. One of the members had a proposal to try to maybe discuss taking it down, doing away with it, and it did not get traction. It was too, it was split at P&amp;Z as well. And so I would, but I don't know about covering the true cost. I mean, if you've got a bucket truck and you've got three employees, I think you need to up it. You know, $25 is really cheap, but I don't know about several hundred dollars. I think you need to, they are taxpayers, too. So I think an increase, but maybe not the total cost.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Aaron Werke.
So I give both sides of the argument on this. On the, if we were to eliminate the banners, could you still put a special ordinance in to allow one like we do now to extend them?
We, we can. Obviously, we can make an exception to any ordinance that's provided to council to allow for some relief valve, but you're, you would still be accomplishing the same thing. So if we're gonna hang the banners for one individual, then we should probably do it for others. Just one comment, Councilmember Hanks, on the taxpayers. A lot of these are churches that are asking for them to put up, so they're not paying tax, but I understand your concern. Yes, ma'am.
The people who are taxpayers.
Yes, yes, you're right. You're right. But yes, if I'm understanding, council collectively, you want us to bring back an amendment to the ordinance to allow for a better covering of our costs, but would still like to leave the banners in place and some additional flexibility on the reader boards to include, cover some of our costs there, and allow for more options.
I got, I got one que, on the reader boards, is there any other places, if we're gonna invest in that, they can go? Can they go on medians, or can they go in other places in the city to increase exposure, maybe coming in on things?
In the city's right-of-way, yes, they can, but in TechStop right-of-ways, they cannot. So, for instance, the one that's at Blackhawk in FM 2351. Originally, it was supposed to be in the median of FM 2351, which had been far more effective, but TechStop wouldn't allow it, so that's why we moved it off the roadway and put it on Blackhawk.
Yeah, I like the idea of expanding. I'm just wondering if people are looking across, trying to read the thing going by fast that are going this way.
I think it's quite more distracting.
Yeah.
It's effective, though.
If you just missed what you thought you needed to see.
And you look back.
So you have to keep looking at it till it scrolls through, gets back to the thing that you thought you saw, and you're like, oh, okay.
Yeah.
If it's a big banner.
I hear you all loud and clear. Yes.
Thanks, Rod.
Thank you.
All right. Item eight, zone classification change from single-family residential to community shopping center, 801 West Parkwood Avenue 8A. I now open this public hearing, public hearing regarding a request for a zone classification change for property located at 801 West Parkwood Avenue, a 6.3951 acre tract of land within the Whitney subdivision and the Sarah McKissick League survey. Abstract number 151, city of Friendswood, Gals County, Texas, to change from single-family residential to community shopping center. Aubrey, are you gonna educate us?
Yes, sir. Let's give you a quick little rundown. So this is a request for 6 point... I'm trying to get my, there we go. So this is the map of the tract. So 6.3951 acres located along FM 528 between Friendswood Plaza Shopping Center, that is located at 709 West Parkwood Avenue, and Chigger Creek. The property is currently zoned, single-family residential, and the request is to change to community shopping center. The future land use map that was amended in 2021 identifies the property developing as retail in order to further the economic goals of the city. Future development would be subject to the zoning ordinance requirements. The property is subject to the community overlay district requirements. So screening for commercial-zoned property adjacent to residential-zoned property is an eight-foot opaque fence and a landscape buffer with a tree every 25 feet. Since this property is in the COD, the landscape buffers would be required to be 15 feet instead of 10. Public hearing notices were published in the newspaper, mailed to property owners within 200 feet, and the sign was posted on the property. And when developed, the property, the developer would be required to provide onsite detention to meet current floodplain requirements. P&amp;Z held their public hearing on Thursday, April 13th. They voted five to zero in favor of the requested zone change. We had two members absent. The property owner attended the meeting, and no public comments were received, either in favor or opposition of the request.
Thank you. Does the applicant have any comments?
I'm gonna read so I can stay on track. I'm Ruth Ann Madison Prince, and I'm representing the Madison family. Our request is to make a zone change from single-family to CSE to be in compliance with Friendswood's future land use map that this council voted unanimously twice to adopt in 2021. Planning and zoning commissioners also unanimously approved the future land use map in 2021, and they voted again unanimously, like Aubrey mentioned, in favor of the zone change last month. There were no public comments in opposition. Changing from residential to commercial zoning on this property aligns with all our city's development goals and guiding documents, Friendswood's economic development policy, Vision 2020, and the 528 Commercial Corridor Strategy Plan. As Friendswood has grown, this property with over 500 feet of frontage along 528 is now best suited for commercial purposes. We're not working with any developers, and we have no plans or intentions to partner with any specific buyers in the future. This request comes strictly from our family with no hidden agendas. We plan to put the property on the market for sale after the zoning is changed. We have proactively reached out to all the homeowners and made ourselves available to meet and gather feedback, but there has been minimal interest and discussion from Hunter's Creek residents. The input we did receive was about visibility of the new development, fence lines, screening, and what would go where. The most practical use for this land would place future development along 528, farthest away from the homes. Since the property slopes down to Chigger Creek, the west side is too low for construction. Placing detention by the creek is prohibited. There are significant onsite drainage requirements, so it stands to reason that a dry detention pond would be located along the back of the property, closest to the homes that do not have commercial exposure. Now, this would make an excellent buffer and would help nearby residents mitigate flooding in the future. Rest assured, we will do our best to work with any future buyers to come up with a plan that includes something beneficial for Friendswood while still keeping the neighbors' privacy and screening factored into decisions. We appreciate your time and would appreciate your support and your vote in favor of our zone change request.
Thank you.
Do I sit?
Yes.
Or what?
Please, please sit down.
Please, sit down.
I have three speakers signed up to speak to this public hearing. Karen Madison Daly.
I'm Karen Madison Daly, and I support the zone change at 801 West Parkwood. I was asked to read a letter for Mike Masek, who couldn't attend tonight. He's the owner of 1101 Briar Creek. Being a residential property owner in Friendswood since 1998, I know the area well and have a good understanding of the importance of zoning as it relates both to commercial and quality-of-life perspectives. In particular, I own a property with a backyard abutting at FM 528, slightly west of HEB. Unfortunately, it's difficult to enjoy this property, especially in the backyard, due to the noise from vehicular traffic, including ambulances. It's easy to conclude from this experience that FM 528... It's easy to conclude from this experience that FM 528 corridor is aptly suited for commercial zoning. Secondly, it is clear that Friendswood is underserved commercially. Adding to the commercial base would provide both convenience and residential property tax relief. I support the zone change to commercial at 801 West Parkwood, and I hope you will too. Thank you, Michael Masek. Thank you.
Thank you. George Cushing?
I'm going to pass.
You'll pass. Harold Benson. Harold Benson's not going to pass.
I don't miss a chance.
You don't miss a chance, no, sir.
I'm Harold Benson. I've lived at 305 North Shatterbin since 63. Back in the old days, there was a big discussion of whether the commercial center of this town would be at 2351 and 518 or 528 and 518. I think it's pretty obvious who, who won that argument. So I support changing.
Thank you, Harold. All right. There being no one else desiring to speak, I now close this public hearing and move on to item 8B. 8B, consider an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the City of Friendswood to change the zoning classification of the property located at 801 West Parkwood Avenue, a 6.3951 acre tract of land within the Whitney subdivision and the Sarah McKissick League survey, abstract number 151, City of Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, from single-family residential to community shopping center. I'll make the motion on this.
And I'll second.
Sally, you'll second. And I think Councilmember Rocky has an excused absence tonight. He's in Italy. Councilmember Graffon. Want to leave now?
You're excused.
Councilmember Graffon, I apologize for that.
Don't forget we're celebrating Jewish history. That's why.
It's all coming together now. But Councilmember Graffon left a letter, I heard, I was told.
Yes, sir.
Murad, would you read the council member's letter?
Yes, sir. Robert wrote a letter that says, "I am sorry I cannot be there with you this evening, especially since this is John Scott's last meeting. I wish I could be there to thank him in person for his 12 honorable years of dedicated volunteer service to the residents of Friendswood and our community. Thank you, John Scott. Honorable mayor, council citizens, I write this statement in support of the zone change for the property at 801 West Parkwood Avenue. I believe this change is consistent with what this council did for the Kenton Harris family by placing their property under the canopy of the downtown district and changing it from single-family residential to commercial. This past, past month, we were presented with the complete audit of the city's financial statement for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2022. In it, we read, "Sales and alcohol tax revenue remained strong during the fiscal year 2022, providing a 12.72% increase from the year, from, for the year, from 9.9 million to 11.2 million. This past week, we received a sales tax report from Rod Kabiri, where he was happy to report, "As of February, the revenue has outpaced budgeted amounts by 499,000 in the general fund. We should all be applauding this increased activity, for it lessens the burden of running our city, for our residents on the ad valorem taxes, and it's keeping with the 2020 vision plan prior councils championed since 2006. And lessening the tax burden on our residents is what John Scott's been championing for for the past 12 years. I wholeheartedly agree with the planning and zoning commission's recommendations, and urge my colleagues to support this zone change."
Thank you. Councilmember Branson, did you have anything? Anybody else? Comments? Councilmember Aaron Wirth?
Yeah, so if, if this passes, we'll be able to approve the plans that go on this property, correct?
City council would not. This is, but P&amp;Z would be able to approve a site plan.
And then it would come to us?
No, sir. If P&amp;Z approves it, it would, it would be approved at that level.
How's the, well, my biggest concern is you've put a commercial right there, you're probably going to need a light at Windsor and 528 to come left out of that. Have we done any traffic studies of this area? Are people cutting across parking lots if they connect all those parking lots to HEBs?
So we've done traffic studies for the entire intersection to include the Windsor intersection as well as Sunset and FM 528. Ultimately, there would be a traffic signal at some point in the future when the, the trips warrant the installation of it, and it will be done at text dot's dime unless we've exceeded 50,000 in population. At that point, it would be our responsibility. It would likely be a multi-phase solution. For instance, you currently have medians basically raised curbs on FM 520, on FM 518 at 528 when you're heading towards League City. And that's an intermediate step or solution to prohibit left turn movements or through movements before a signal is ultimately warranted. So I, what I would likely, what you'd likely see in the future is some sort of access management along 528 to prohibit certain through movements and left turn movements before you see full-fledged lighting, because it's too close to the intersection of Sunset.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree we need, we do need this taxable revenue. I just worry about the infrastructure that's in place in that area right now, because it's just the time it takes to get down that, that road. And if we start throwing more stuff right there, it might be like leisure right now. And that's my biggest concern.
This speaks to another issue that's on the agenda this evening as well, and that is just alternative modes of transportation throughout the city, alternate routes and stuff.
Yeah.
Anyone else have a motion in a second? All in favor? Opposed? Five to one. All right, item nine, zone classification change request from single-family residential to downtown district with a specific use permit to allow NAICS use 8131 religious organizations and NAICS use 624 social assistance, 502 South Friendswood Drive and 107 West Spreading Oaks. I now open this public hearing regarding a request for a zone classification change for property located at 502 South Friendswood Drive and 107, 7 West Spreading Oaks, 6.0551 acres out of lots 1, 2, 4, and 8, block 12, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, to change from single-family residential to downtown district with a specific use permit to allow NAICS use 8131 religious organizations and NAICS use 624 social assistance.
Yes. So this is the property commonly known as Friends Church. This is mainly a cleanup item regarding zoning. There's actually no external building changes or site changes proposed at this time. The current zoning is, where am I supposed to? Okay. The current zoning is single-family residential. It's been zoned that way since 1970, which was our first zoning map. So the specific use permit that's labeled on the zoning map right now, there's no ordinance that ever backed that up. So they are within the boundary of the downtown district, and it's the goal, obviously, to get all of our properties in that boundary changed to downtown. So religious organizations is allowed with an SUP as an overlay on the downtown district. So the proposal is to change to downtown with the SUP for the church and then also for 624 for social assistance to allow the church to participate in a family promise which, in other charitable organizations. The public hearing notices were published in the paper mailed to property owners within 200 feet, and the sign was posted on the property. And like I said, the site is remaining the same, no external changes to the property. The future possibilities for petition, for participation in the family programs program may require some interior alterations to one of their buildings, which was the impetus for this discussion. We have to get our zoning correct in order to be able to issue building permits. P&amp;Z Commission held their public hearing on Thursday, April 13th. They voted five to zero in favor of the request. No one from the church was able to attend that meeting, and no public comments were received either in favor or in opposition to the request.
Thanks, Aubrey. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Would you like to speak, sir?
Sure. I'm Don Powell. I'm the chair of the Facilities Committee at the Friends Church. Wanted to give everybody an update. Since March 1st and August 1st, we are losing three of the four pastoral staff that we have. So as a result of that, last week, the leadership decided to put on hold the actual renovation of our education building for family promise. We want to give the new staff an opportunity to get in place, evaluate all the ministries of the church, and again, recommend, let's go forward next year with family promise, or there may be another use for that building. We would like to go ahead and get the rezoning done, so whenever the decision is made on how to renovate the building, we'll be ready to go.
Thanks, sir. I don't have any cards, so there, being, being no one desiring to speak, I now close this public hearing and move on to item 9B. 9B, consider an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the City of Friendswood to change the zoning classification of the property located at 502 South Friendswood Drive and 107 West Spreading Oaks, 6.0551 acres out of lots 1, 2, 4, and 8, block 12, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, from single-family residential to downtown district and granting specific use permit to allow NAICS use 8131 religious organizations and NAICS use 624 social assistance for such property.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Sally Branson, second from Clint Aaron Wirth. Any discussion on this? Steve Rocky.
Yeah, Steve, I, I just want to make sure I understand this. You're, the rezoning converts it to the proper zoning for, for the church that's already there. And then the church may, and it sounds like it might be a year from now, would, would ask for some permits to do some reclamation into the property for, for social assistance or whatever it was called. And can, can somebody explain what that is?
Social assistance is just, it's a category in the NAICS code that allows the church, basically, some uses kind of fall under the umbrella of the church, but since they're having, the discussions were like people staying during the day on the property, and it was the accommodations that they were going to, kind of extended beyond the normal operations of the church. So we're adding that use to formalize the use that they were proposing on their property.
So this would be so people would be temporarily staying?
Yes, the idea was that during the day, the, from my, my understanding, and Don might be able to explain a little better, but during the day, like, people would be there for job training and things like that. And then at the, that night, they go stay at patron, or parishioners' houses for overnight stays.
Yes, the building would be used, they call it a day center. It's families that enter their program that are out of work, don't have a place to live. The facility would be used for training. They'd have a setup with computers to do resume writing, trying to get interviews for jobs, but they would only be there during the day.
Sounds like a program that good churches do, Don.
Yes, it's, they're a nonprofit. There are 13 churches that participate as far as housing the people during the evenings. Meals are brought in. They have people at those churches, stay with the families and work with them and make them feel welcome in the program and encourage them to stay in the program and hopefully find a job and, and do that.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have a motion in a second? All in favor? So it's six to nothing. Item 10, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know it seems every meeting we're recognizing this esteemed group of financial folks in our administrative services office, and rightfully so. We received noticed, next slide, please. We received noticed, I'm sorry, lady. We received notice this past month of the 20th consecutive GFOA budget presentation award. And, and this year in particular, we had the second year in a row, we had even, I guess, even special recognition. There's Katina. Third, second time, second time in two years. But basically of additional note, not only did we get the standard budget presentation award, but we got a special recognition within the budget presentation award. I like, like to commend Katina, Rhonda, Jennifer, Emily, and Andrea. Emily's no longer with the City of Friendswood, but for their efforts to making that happen. Not every city is able to get these recognitions and then to be able to carry it 20 years for the budget, 34 years for our audit, is definitely something stellar that we love here in Friendswood. And thank you, Katina, to you and your team. Next slide. As you know, we're well underway with the city election. Early voting is currently taking place in Friendswood. If you haven't gotten out to vote, please do so. Whoever's elected will have big shoes to fill for, from Councilmember Scott. And then this Saturday is the actual election day voting. So thank you to those that have voted and encourage more folks to get out there and vote. As well as vote for Councilmember Branson, since she's on the ballot. She's the other position on the ballot unopposed. Our police department recently partnered with the Galveston County Health District for what you've heard on the news is Narcon. It's a anti-drug to address opioid overdose. We'd like to commend our police department for reaching out with Galveston County and partnering with them on this. We will get 100 units of the Narcon drug to administer on any overdoses we happen to come upon. They will be trained as well on how to utilize this drug so, to make sure that it's effectively administered. Kay Corey, who is in the audience this evening, a longtime volunteer and resident with the City of Friendswood. As you know, she's one of the board members on our Keep Friendswood Beautiful. Recently, she was recognized by Texas, Keep Texas Beautiful as the Volunteer of the Year, which is quite an outstanding honor to, to be recognized. Obviously, it doesn't reflect all that she's done for our community, but it's always nice to, to, to recognize the folks in Friendswood. And thank you, Kay, for all that you do. Two more quick items on the city manager's report. I want to recognize our Director of Information Technology, James O'Brien. Recently, he was selected to the state's cybersecurity task force, so to speak. The Department of Information Resources has asked him to serve in the review of their strategic plan for cybersecurity needs. And then our Deputy Director, Jim Greenwood, was selected, or recently completed some of his cybersecurity certifications. I am sad to note, though, that I was informed today that James O'Brien will be leaving us. I should have known better when he's getting selected to these boards that he's probably got other opportunities along the way. Well, you're welcome to flatten his tires. He's that big F-350 out there. But no, James, you will be missed. Lastly, it's not on my city manager's report, but I did want to make a mention of it since it is a health and safety thing. Some folks may have seen a boil water notice that was issued errantly and correctly by Channel 39, CW 39, suggesting that the City of Friendswood was under boil water notice. We are not under boil water notice. In fact, it's not even our agency that was involved in the issue, as Harris County Mud 55 had a spill over there on West Bay Area Boulevard near the Blackhawk wastewater treatment plant. And the only areas that are impacted are those that are on groundwater wells. And you know our Friendswood water supply is based on surface water out of the southeast plant. So it's not impacting Friendswood, but I did want to make that point of clarification.
Thank you, Murad.
Thank you.
Great report. Item 11, business items. 11A, consider authorizing a janitorial services contract with American Janitorial Services Limited, RFP 2023-07. Motion, motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Six to nothing. Thanks, James, Tony. 11B, consider approving an emergency dispatching services agreement between the city and Harris County Municipal Utility District, number 55. Motion in a second. Any discussion on this?
I was ready to vote.
All in favor? Thanks, Chief.
Yep.
I was trying to say the chief from walking up here.
11C, consider authorizing an interlocal agreement with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District for the acquisition of property for flood mitigation improvements at 23 Wilderness Trail.
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion?
So this item is, as well as the next item are interrelated, but they're, one is not contingent upon the other. Well, obviously, and I'll, I'll specify. So back in March, council authorized me to move forward with the earnest money contract for 23 Wilderness Trails. The property was on the market and had been on the market for over 90 days, probably longer than that, but when would the city noticed it? 23 Wilderness Trails is where the backs up to Chigger Creek. In our efforts of evaluating it for the city's needs, both for the extension of Friendswood Parkway, as well as some utility needs that we have in the area, we approached the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District on a partnership. And they had indicated to us that they wanted to use the remainder of the property that's not utilized for roadway or for utilities for a detention pond or flood mitigation efforts. That item got tabled at their last board meeting. If the district partners with us or not, we still have a use for the, the property. We can sell the remainder of it if we so choose, or we can utilize it for other utility needs that we have. So the interlocal is. The interlocal agreement is that partnership.
Can you explain a little more about the utility needs there?
So, as you know, we lack certain water and sewer infrastructure on the old Exxon property. We also lack adequate water pressure on the south end of our town during the summer peak months. There are some interconnectivities, interconnections that are desperately needed that were highlighted in our water model that would connect the Water Plant 5 back to FM 528, where we have some water lines to boost pressures in the southern end of town, improve areas in Sun Meadow, Boca Ruta, and so on and so forth. So it's not just the roadway. We desperately need that connection in order to extend certain utilities.
And that property would be a spot on that?
Yes, sir.
Do you have Robert's notes that he sent on that to you?
I do, and it's for the next item, but I can read it now if y'all want me to read it now.
Maybe it ties in, maybe on the...
Please, sir.
Mayor and council, I believe this business item to consider the acquisition of 23 Wilderness Trails so important that I'm compelled to express for the record my support for the acquisition and my statement to be placed in the minutes as written. The owner of this property passed away a year and a half ago, and her daughter, while dealing with the loss of her mother, was finalizing her estate, and this property was the last big part that she needed, she had to deal with. At this time, a potential developer, at that time, the potential developer posted their plans to develop what was known, as we all know, as the Exxon property. As soon as those plans were made known to the public and the proposed plan for what would become the extension of Friendswood Parkway, it ruined any chance of their daughter, April Ballard, to realize and sell this property under such a cloud. In Friendswood, where my property, where property transactions occur prior to listings is the norm, all prospective buyers evaporated. This presented a unique opportunity to the city to again purchase property along a creek for potential drainage, but more importantly, to ensure the city an easement of 120 feet needed for future development, regardless of it where Friendswood Parkway or any other roadway. Though its size does not lend itself to a valuable detention pond, it does give the city and the Drainage District, if they join us, unfettered access to Trigger Creek, which has always been critical in emergency preparedness and rescue debris and disstangling operations and lay down locations. The council unanimously gave Murad Kabiri the authority to enter good faith, lengths, good faith negotiations to purchase this property, and he has executed our wishes flawlessly. It is now up to us to stand by our convictions and have the courage to follow through with what we started. Should we fail to do so, we'd send a chilling message to our city manager and staff that we do not have the courage and conviction to stand by our decisions when the wind might blow in a different direction. I urge the mayor and my colleagues to consummate the transaction as presented respectfully. Robert Gruffon.
Just to be clear, it was not unanimous. I voted against it.
It was six to one.
No, I'm reading the statement as presented, and I understand...
I'm correcting the statement. So it was not unanimous. It was six to one.
Correct.
I opposed.
But that's minutes, lady.
Please put that in the minutes.
Any other discussion on the interlocal agreement?
I've got one question, and kind of what Robert said, I'm 110% for needing this thorough affair. How do we keep the dark cloud from hanging on that area of where that pass is going to go, so it's not like what he read in that letter, and people are kind of cautious of where we'll be able to get transparent on that?
Sure. The, this entire discussion is not a matter of if the roadway ever will be extended, it's a matter of when the roadway will be extended. As we've discussed previously, the cost of this overall roadway connecting from FM 528 to Pearland Parkway is a very expensive endeavor, and it's fraught with a lot of issues, whether it's clearing Trigger Creek and Cowards Creek, or it's environmental issues with the old oilfield properties that's known as the Exxon property. There's only one logical place to cross Trigger Creek, and that is at 23 Wilderness Trails. The other option, because of the Drainage District's detention pond on the south side or the east side of Trigger Creek, it's 33 surface acres. The only logical location to cross Trigger Creek would be on the other end of Wilderness Trails, closer to Creekwood Estates. Those properties are not for sale. The cumulative value of those property on the tax rolls right now is over eight and a third, $8.3 million, versus this tract that's on, that was on the market, the property's for sale and the house is vacated, for 830 is what we settled on. So my intent, and what we are showing on our future plans, is to have the roadway as far away from the existing homeowners as possible, far away from the Wilderness Trail subdivision and Apple Blossom and, Applewood, sorry, as well as from Creekwood Estates, and have it close to about 12 to 1250 feet away from both those homes. Ultimately, it's going to be dependent on who's funding the project. If the city of Friendswood were funding the project, that's where it would be built smack dab away from, in the middle away from the existing soams, as far away as possible. The issue lies in the fact that we need other alternative roadways, aside from FM 518, aside from Sunset. And obviously, anytime you build these roadways, it comes with a series of impacts to existing quality of life, because folks are used to backing up to a pasture land. We dealt with the same issue on the other side of FM 528, when we extended what's now Friendswood Parkway, but it's Friendswood Lakes Boulevard. In fact, the city, in preparation for that project in the early 2000s, bought eight acres of property to make that roadway extend beyond North Eagle Creek, a tributary of Trigger Creek, and donated the right of way to a developer and the county to build the roadway, and then gave the rest of the right of way through a license agreement to a developer to put a detention pond in order to make those projects become a reality. So this is not uncommon. If the roadway is ever going to get built, we're going to have to acquire the right of way necessary for it.
Can I say something?
Councilmember Hanks.
Yes, thank you. So, since we're combining these two different items, I wanted to make a couple of comments.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that in the 40 years that I've been here, there are a lot of things that are done to us. We were not a master plan community. We were a small city that's grown up with areas right next to us that are growing very quickly and causing some of our heartache and some of our problems. Traffic is the number one thing people talk to me about when they talk to me about issues in the city, and a lot of it is because of 528, 518, 2351. But having said all that, I think it is so important for us to protect our neighborhoods. So many of the newer neighborhoods are more aligned to like a master plan. They have brick walls, they have, you know, borders or trees, things that protect those homeowners, and our older subdivisions are not that way. So I'm very sensitive to that castle wood. You know, you and I have had that talk. It is too straight, too long. It would be a speedway. But I also think that Friendswood needs more than just million dollar homes, and our older neighborhoods provide people, young families, young couples, teachers, police officers who can't walk in and buy a million dollar home, they're young professionals that want to live and raise their kids here, just like I did 40 years ago. And so I think when we, like what Brent just brought up, I'm for this because it's going to happen, and I don't want to be in a reactive mode again, trying to solve a problem that somebody else has given us. So I want to be proactive and have some, you know, being charge of our destiny, basically, in this area. So I would like to, I'm going to support this as a first step, and then I hope that we will spend some time visioning what the city can do to shift that road away from the back of Applewood, those houses on Applewood, and protect our more established older neighborhoods that gives some diversity in this community to younger professionals and younger people moving in.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that's what I think.
Thank you.
Well, so I'll just clearly, or clarify why I oppose it. It's for a couple of reasons. First and foremost, I think we're paying too much, you know, for a property that has to have a home demolished on it. That's, and part of it's in the floodway and part of it's in a right of way, and so I think the price is too high. That, you know, that's the first thing. The second thing is, is that, you know, all government does this, right? They take what they think is right, and they, and mostly, it's in good faith, well, always it's in good faith. It's somebody's idea, but they go out and they bet on the come. So they go and they bet that, well, this roadway is going to go right through here, and we'll get a developer one day, and then we'll make it happen, and meanwhile, they're spending taxpayer dollars to do that, right? So the better way to do it is to put it before the voters, let the voters vote on it, which we did. There was money on the ballot for the last bond election for seed money to help extend the road, and it got voted down. The citizens didn't vote for it. So I don't want to see, I don't think that it's prudent on our part to take taxpayer dollars that could be used elsewhere and go, in my opinion, overpay, and there'll be somebody that'll say, well, it's what it was appraised for and everything else, that's fine. But I just don't see where it's, you know, the right thing to do by taking those dollars that don't belong to us, they belong to y'all, and spending the money that you guys pay to the city betting on something that the citizens have already once told us no. So we know here, so a couple of things, Brittany Bay Boulevard was a big election deal when I got elected 12 years ago, when Harold Whitaker was mayor 30 years ago. This is an ongoing thing. So we know that to build this road would cost 35, 50, 60 million dollars to connect it from where it is now to 2351 and eventually to Pearland Parkway. We're never going to have that kind of money. It's going to have to come from outside. It's going to have to come from developers that are wishing to partner with the city and get incentives to help develop that road itself. So what I would urge the city to do is to put together and present to the citizens an actual plan where you want the road to go, so that everybody has access to it, so that everybody can see it, and then explain to the citizens why it makes sense to them. Because if it doesn't make sense to the people that pay the bills, then it shouldn't make sense to us, right? So I understand that, we know that there's a traffic issue. We all sit up here, we field phone calls, we get to talk about that stuff. But when the citizens say, we don't want to spend that kind of money on a road, then you listen to the citizens. That's what you do. I mean, we're servants of the community. So I don't, that, the reason that I oppose this is simply that, that I don't think it's a good bet to go overpay for a piece of property for the extension of a road, that we're not clear, every developer that comes in changes the plat and where they want it to go, and we're going to go spend the money anyway, and on top of that, the Drainage District tabled it, so we don't have a partner right now. So I don't, I don't think it's a good investment. I really don't. And that, you know, that's my opinion, and I know that I'm probably the lone dissent up here, and that's why I dissented last time, because I just don't think it's responsible of us to bet on the come, and that's what we're doing. 30 years we've been talking about Brittany Bay Boulevard, for 30 years. There's not any right of ways through the Exxon property that anybody's really showed any sincere interest in doing any development with. There's a ton of issues there. But incentivize the developer to get it done, as opposed to, you know, spending the taxpayer dollars outright. That's my opinion.
This particular item is about the interlocal agreement with the Drainage District, and I think they will partner, of course, at the end of the day, and our cost on this will be about $415,000, and Drainage District wants to do it because they're going to take a piece of it and put a drainage project there, which they need, we need, and we'll have this as a, as a stake in the ground on where, you know, this road will possibly go. I think, I think we need to buy this property to be ready for that. It's kind of a stepping stone approach. Steve, you want to say something else?
My last chance to respond to John.
Whoa. We still have other items.
The reason I'm going to vote for this is, one, we need it for the utility work. That's been clear and expressed before. As to the price, you know, we've all known what prices have gone up in Friendswood, and that price is what it was evaluated at, and that's what it is. What it does do for us is we're not betting on the come. We're doing exactly the opposite. What we're doing is we're putting a spot there that we can help direct where that road will ultimately go, okay? So if we didn't own it, we have nothing. We have no control, okay? If somebody comes in or a developer comes in, at least we have the spot where we can start to, start to do that and press that to be the pathway that we want on that. So I'd vote for this alone, for just the ability to work on our water system, to be honest. And if we share it with the Drainage District, that's great. If not, it doesn't matter to me. So I think it's a good value for us.
Thank you. All right, have a motion in a second. All in favor? Opposed? Five to one. Okay, item 11D, consider authorizing an earnest money contract with the estate of Mary Ellen Cobal Ballard for the purchase of approximately 2.019 acres located at 23 Wilderness Trail, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, and authorize the city manager to close on the property.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second.
I should say it again?
Can we hit the replay? Any questions? We kind of beat this dead horse. Any other discussion items?
I tried to kick it back to life, but...
Yeah, you want to kick it again? All right. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Item 11E, consider authorizing an earnest money contract with the estate of Charles Crady III for the purchase of approximately 3.4 acres described as tract 16, abstract 15, J. Dickerson survey, Friendswood, Harris County, Texas. Have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion, a second. Hill, yeah, tell us about this one.
So just wanted to give you a real quick rundown on this property. This is property that is adjacent to city-owned property on Blackhawk Boulevard near the wastewater treatment plant. It's landlocked. This is property that we have looked at, the city has, to do a flood control project there. We've known for a little while that we're going to have to get this property at some point, and the opportunity has presented itself, and the family has decided they want to divest itself of that property, and they're willing to cut us a pretty good rate on it as well, so.
This is property adjacent to the acres that...
Correct.
West Ranch gave over to the city.
That's correct, yes.
Hill said Blackhawk Boulevard, it's, sorry, West Bay Area Boulevard, adjacent to our Blackhawk wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
And since this is on, this is on Clear Creek, we can use the bond money, right?
We can, yes, sir.
Okay.
All in favor? Six to nothing. Okay, consider awarding a construction contract for the Blackhawk Boulevard Reconstruction Phase 2B Project to Triple B Services LLP, bid 2023-05.
Motion, a second.
Motion, a second. Any questions for Hill on this? This is, we're splitting the costs with...
Harris County Commissioner...
Precinct 2, and he's helping us get that Boulevard finished, so.
That's excellent.
Good stuff.
Great stuff.
All in favor? Okay. Consider awarding the 2020 Lift Station Mitigation Package III Harvey Lift Station Repairs and Mitigation Project to McDonald Municipal and Industrial Division of CF McDonald Electric and...
Motion, a second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Six to nothing. 11H, consider authorizing the First Amendment to the Agreement with Harris County for the Blackhawk Property Acquisition and Rehab Project.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion, questions?
For your benefit, both this item and the next item are similar to one another. Both this project and the Forest Bend Detention Pond Project are part of the GLO slash Harris County Partnership with the City of Friendswood Disaster Recovery Funds. Both those projects have experienced impacts due inflation. Harris County and GLO are giving us additional funding towards this effort.
So on this project, about $300,000?
One's about 300, the other's about 320.
Okay.
Hold on.
We did benefit from some projects that didn't go through. It was a matter of us asking at the right time, and they were willing to work with us on...
Right, okay.
This first one's 300,000.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor? Right. Consider authorizing the First Amendment to the Agreement with Harris County for the Forest Bend Detention Pond Project.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Item, yeah, item 12. 12A, consider an ordinance amending the city's general budget for fiscal year 2022-2023 by approving Budget Amendment 7 and providing for a supplemental appropriation or transfer of certain... seven and providing for a supplemental appropriation or transfer of certain funds.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Unanimous. Consider on first reading an ordinance amending Chapter fifty-eight Parks and Recreation, Article One in general of the Friendswood City Code by renumbering Section fifty-eight through ninety-six exemptions from division and adding a new Section fifty-eight ninety-six entitled Dogs.
Motion to
Wait till we make our comments, and then you can make your comment.
To prohibit dogs at certain city parks during athletic practice sessions, games, or league or tournament activities.
Can't discuss yet.
What happened, Al?
I want to make an amendment.
But we have to, we have to go through this.
Shall we get out of first row?
Yes. John, just imagine how it's gonna be after you're gone.
What in the world's gonna happen when I leave?
Yeah. You'll have to come, yeah, you'll have to keep tradition.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
That gets us started. Now you can talk. Well, okay, so this weekend I had some people stop me. The ordinance as proposed says that dogs have to be leashed, and someone asked me, what if they're in a kennel? So, I know that the intent is to restrain dogs. So, can we have the language amended to say restrained either by leash or kennel?
We can, and just for clarification, under no circumstances are dogs allowed if it is an athletic event or tournament play, whether they're restrained or not.
But what are we addressing then? We're addressing other times. Yes, and so then it would be instead of just leashing them, also having
In kennel, correct.
Because the purpose is to restrain them, right? So, they can't get to people. And can we just simplify it to be restrained and not try to be as specific?
So, we currently have on the books an ordinance that prohibits animals at large. So, if you're out there jogging with your dog in the park, period, any park, you have to have them on a leash or in a kennel. I've seen some folks put them in baby carriages. I mean, it's all out there. This ordinance further refines that as well as enacts a prohibition that if, for instance, you're at Renwick Park during Friendswood Youth Baseball, you can't have a pet out there at all due to an incident in which a pet had bitten the kid in the dugout several years, several, several years back. So.
Does it get softer?
We don't have to do anything. If, if, if this was requested at the, by Friendswood Youth Baseball, they had a opening day ceremonies, Three Little Pities was out there, they were allowed to be out there per Friendswood Youth Baseball. They brought pets, and they didn't want them to bring pets, so they contacted our PD to have them removed, and there's no ordinance prohibits having pets out there, so that's what this is. The city's fine, we can leave it as is if that's the desire of the collective will of council. The intent was to address safety concerns that they believed were in place.
I'd like to support. I think we should address the safety concerns requested. I support Councilmember Hanks, but I would like for it to say restrained. I don't want to be so specific as to what that restraint is, because it can come in all fashions.
But just for clarification, then.
Again, they're not allowed, right?
So, no, but
Unless they're restrained.
So, they're not allowed at all. For sports, if this is permitted, or this is approved, they're not allowed, Centennial during soccer or football events, Renwick at baseball, period, restrained or not, if this is approved.
All right, so I think we need an amended motion to add or change the wording.
Correct.
I have a request, Councilmember Hanks, to amend the language to be restrained by a leash or a kennel.
We don't have a second.
Nobody second that. When are you waiting on offer, Al?
I'll second that Councilmember Hanks amended motion and go with that for now.
So, if they're not allowed, why are we have to do amended to say restrained?
They're not allowed during sporting events.
During sporting events.
That's what the clause is gonna say. They're not allowed. I'm with you, Councilmember Rock.
Would you read it? Would you read that? So, it, it, why do we even put leash in there unless there is a time when they're allowed? But yes, there are two different things. So, let's read it. Have it read, please.
So, it says, except as provided by subsection D of the section, it'll be lawful for any person to permit a dog owned or possessed by such person in a park other than Friendswood Dog Park unless it's kept under restraint at all times by means of a leash or kennelled, if that's what you desired, or in a park with athletic or sporting facilities during athletic practice sessions, games, or league tournament or activities.
So, prohibited around youth activities but leashed or kennelled at other times. Yeah. No, because now it doesn't say kennel. No, it just says leashed.
But are we good with the amendment? Are we legal?
You have a motion in a second.
And, and we're legal with those words, and you're happy with that?
You could have words spelled any way you wanted.
All right. All in favor? As the amended motion. Opposed? Four to two. Okay.
I see. I'll remember this.
That's a first. That's a first.
It's happened before.
No, no, but the two of you.
Yeah.
Motion is to approve it with additional language, but we need to vote on the whole ordinance now.
Okay. All right.
No, so what you, y'all did is you, you approved an amendment to the motion, and everyone was comfortable, at least the majority was comfortable with the addition of the word kennel to restrain. Now you need to vote on the actual ordinance.
All right. Got a motion in a second on the amended motion. All in favor of that?
Oh, the amendment, I thought we just voted on the amended. Now we're voting on the original. Now we're just voting on the original.
The original?
Yes.
Well, okay.
Because we just passed the amended.
You have to step it down with the original.
All right. All in favor of the amended motion?
No, we just approved the original.
Original motion? You know, all in favor of the original motion? Opposed?
So, y'all just denied the ordinance altogether.
I think we did that right.
John got his way.
Perfect.
No, the first motion failed. We passed the amended motion.
So, what you did is you wanted to, you had a main motion, you had a secondary motion to amend that to include language.
Right.
And so, that was good, so you needed to vote on the underlying motion, which, which would include the additional language.
So, now the original was amended.
We voted. I mean, honestly.
Let's see.
They can revisit that, can't they?
Yeah, point of order, we can't talk about it anymore. We've voted.
We voted. Let's see.
Quit gloating down there, John.
All right. Let's bring that one back next month with the correct wording.
Yeah.
Change, change the wording to what we amended it to, which we were trying to approve. I'm sorry, it's got away from me.
Baseball season will be over by then.
We were waiting on your lead to see how.
All right.